To order for June Commissioners Meeting, at this time, I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Thuley.
Thank you. Commissioner McClain will have our end cut.
If you all will, please bow with me. Holy God, we just ask your blessings to continue on us today. We ask for peace, peace that only you can provide.
Yes.
We ask to fill it amongst ourselves, amongst the people of this county, and we just, we don't know people's situation, but we ask for peace for each and everyone. Now, Father, we ask that you'll continue to bless us with a breath, a nice, calm breath. And while we take that breath in, I ask that you'll give us the Spirit, the Spirit of the Holy Spirit. Help us to be one, united with you, because all purposes of life are for you, and help us to understand that. Now, Father, we just reach out to you and ask the blessing upon everyone here, everyone in this county, everyone who oversees the county, those that work in it, those who live here. Father, we ask to special blessing upon each and every one, and ask you to bless this assembly, and that we do all things that are pleasing to you in your eyes. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Commissioner Garland, will you just send the pledge?
Let us stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, the agenda, I think we're going to remove item four C, and we're going to walk on to the consent agenda, the budget amendments for the animal shelter. Is there anything else that needs to be changed? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Okay.
Second.
You've got a second. All in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous. All right, we'll go to the first item, and we've got a treat tonight. We've got four beautiful young ladies here that's contestants for Miss North Carolina, Miss North Carolina team. At this time, I'd like to have you all come up, and we're going to give you a chance to tell everyone about what you're going to do. So, who's first?
Good evening, everyone. I am Rachel Leonard, Miss Five East Corners Team 2024. In just a few short weeks, I will be competing for Miss North Carolina's team. My CSI is her heart-to-heart advocating for women's heart disease. Heart disease is the leading cause of death within women year after year within the United States. My goal is to make people more aware about the signs and symptoms of women's heart disease due to them being so different than men's symptoms. I would like to help educate people, especially our youth, about the importance of learning about the health and the risk factors that are associated with it. I am currently working with Falcon Children's Home to get AEDs placed within every single cottage that, after a recent event, cardiovascular event that they have had. I've gotten one AED placed within a local ballpark, and I hope to continue doing that to share with people about the importance of learning about your health and being able to advocate for yourself while doing it.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hannah Sky Stevens. I am Miss Five East Corner 2024, and my community service initiative is Sky is the Limit for the Arts, and it is promoting and providing opportunities for those who do not have adequate access to the arts, as well as educating the community on the benefits the arts can provide. So far, I just recently published a book called Spy's, Sky's Musical Secret, and it's about a child finding himself in the arts, as well as I am an author of Sky's the Limit Newsletter, where I talk about the local arts opportunities across North Carolina. Thank you.
My name is Ella Marks, and I'm your Miss Dunn's Team 2024. My community service initiative is Educate and Elevate the Power of Inclusion. By using the tool of literacy, I am able to spread the power of inclusion in the celebration diversity, not just all over North Carolina, but all over America. Thank you.
Good evening. May I just say thank you for adding us to the agenda. I know it's a very, very busy night tonight, so on behalf of our entire committee, just thank you so much for allowing us to be here as we prepare to compete for Miss North Carolina and Miss North Carolina's team, June 24th through the 29th of this year. I am Katie Brown, and I am honored to be Miss Dunn. I really enjoy having this title because I have a city in Harnett County across my chest, but I do so much in the Sampson County community, and so I'm so grateful that you guys are letting us be here tonight. I have a social impact initiative. It's called In the Silence, which encourages honest and age-appropriate conversations about mental health. So, something that we can take away from that is really, really easy, and it's to take away the statement, or the question, rather, of, "How was your day?" Take that out and replace it with, "What was the worst part of your day? What was the best part of your day?" Something to empower children to open up and to communicate about their feelings. And so, that's what I leave you with today, is just to keep that in mind. I'm so excited to be taking that concept with me to the Miss North Carolina stage as long, along with a vocal talent, a fitness wear, and an elegant evening gown, because I am ready and prepared to bring the Miss North Carolina crown back to Sampson County. Thank you.
We're certainly proud to have all of you representing us. I think they wanted to get some pictures. Is that right, Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
All right, with the Commissioners. Is that...
Make it quick.
All right, come on, that's good. Come on up.
With all the board, please.
All the board. Okay, you want to sit out front?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Why don't break it?
Okay. Okay. Look at the big phone first. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you guys.
Thank you so much for coming, and good luck.
Thank you.
Very good. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, that was very nice.
Yes.
Like, do that again.
Uh-huh.
All right, at this time, we'll open a public hearing for the proposed budget for the fiscal year '24, '25.
You did two separate.
I did separate ones, yeah. So, at this time, this is the list.
Yes, there's...
We have some people lined up to speak, so at this time, Mr. Y'all, there, y'all. Well, Mr. Y'all, we've got three minutes, and delighted to come on and give you some...
I won't be long.
No problem.
First of all, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. Just wanted to briefly touch base on the budget that we're looking at for the upcoming years. Here, I'm representing Clement Fire Department. We are trying to build a fire department. We started this several years ago, and as we have moved on through the years, the price has tripled for what it's going to cost us. We would like for the Commissioners to let us have that extra on this revow that we've just had. I've got a proposed budget here. It actually comes out to be $418,000 a year. $40,000 of that has been added to it because of our payment for our new building has gone from $60,000 to $100,000 with the additional cost of what it's going to be to build the building, along with fire trucks and everything that it takes for us to operate. That money could come in handy, especially for small departments as we are. And all we ask is just, please look at this, allow us to continue on as we've been going, and please don't take that money from us. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, I think this is, Mr. Gleim? G, I think it's G-L-E-I-M?
It's Gillum, sir.
Oh, it's Gillum, okay.
I can't read my, I don't know what it was.
I do have my glasses, but I apparently don't read very well.
Hey, no problem, no problem. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Edward Gillum. I'm at 817 West Second Street, Garland, North Carolina, 28441. I was, actually, the conversation of the Ivenhoe Volunteer Fire Department has been heard throughout the community and surrounding communities, and is of great concern. Ivenhoe, although sparsely populated, is comprised of people who have paid taxes and built homes on properties. They value as much as anyone else in Sampson County. To put it no other way, Ivenhoe deserves the Volunteer Fire Department to remain in operation for safety and to protection of its properties. The Ivenhoe Volunteer Fire Department plays a vital role in the community of Ivenhoe, training, assisting, and the protection of the community. We are not asking for no more than the essentials of continuing to have this sense of security and protection in our area. Hell's Fire and Rescue may be approximately 20, 12 to 15 miles away, but the response time in any emergency can be life-threatening and devastating. The Ivenhoe community fought back and took a valiant stand in reference to obtaining county water in Ivenhoe. Now, we ask the county Commissioners to represent and uphold the obligation of providing a safe environment for the community of Ivenhoe. We are aware of the current tax situation across the county, which is somewhat confusing to many, but we hold explanation and to the process of what the county is talking, taking to be explained, and to give the residents the opportunity to respond and give their opinion and input in this matter. We appreciate this time and whatnot, and so we only ask for clarity and communication from our county Commissioners. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gillum. Ms. Hunt?
Good evening. My name is Elaine F. Hunt. I reside at 7171 Old Warsaw Road, Turkey. I don't have as much to say this evening as before, but I come because I realize sometimes out of sight, out of mind, and we don't want you all to forget what's going on with us. I spoke to someone today about the water, county water situation, and they explained to me that you wouldn't know anything to, after the General Assembly has adjourned, and I questioned when that would be, and the gentleman told me. So, tonight, we want to request our common courtesy that if no one else but our representative in Turkey, when you find out something, take the time to email me, or call me, or some of us, because you all have our, my email address, because I have emailed each one of you, so I know you do. And I realize it's a long process, but it seems that it is really, really long, because I've been talking to Ivenhoe too, and I know that they was approved two years ago, and they're still trying to get their water. So, once again, I say our common courtesy, if someone will let us know and keep us informed on what is going on with our request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Lee Kennedy?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Can I bring y'all an attachment?
Certainly.
Hand off to y'all.
No. It would have been fun. You're going to be long with it already.
Sir.
You're not going to be long with it already.
No, sir, not, not planned, no. Thank you. I'm going to give up my top of the flag. Thank you, Mr. Cause.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks. I'm not going to read this verbatim, but I will explain that this year for our budget, it was for the evaluation of $77,200 on the old numbers. The reevaluation numbers stands for our tax rate to give us $101,742. We plan to take that money and add staffing at night at Facen. I know that we are in Duplin County, but we serve a good portion of Sampson County. We assist Piney Grove, Turkey Halls, and part of Newton Grove with fire calls. One of the most important things that we do in our community, especially in Sampson County, is run first responders. We get to a house within four to six minutes of somebody not breathing, or somebody's bleeding out to save their life. That's a matter of life and death that we've changed. If you will look on page two, I have some times there, so the edges of our fire district, Pine Ridge Road, Brewer Road, and Sutton Town Road. And if you see the one on Brewer Road, if anybody knows Brewer Road is split in two by I-40, so we have to cover both sides of it. And I've got down what the regular driving time is getting there, because obviously I can't get out there and run lights and sirens to try to measure my time. But it just discusses times that we've had calls that, you know, it takes us a few minutes to get out of bed if you're home and get to the truck, but if we put somebody there at night that can get out on that truck and get to somebody in four to six minutes and start putting oxygen on somebody, or putting a defibrillator on them to help save their life. And also, just, and it's not anything to EMS, but since EMS moved to their new station here on Commerce Drive, it's taken them a few more minutes away from Facen. So, getting us there quicker is the essential thing, and that's what we're trying to do. On the back page is our budget, and you can just see where we just added the staffing on the right for page staffing, 121, 226, 20. I appreciate your help. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thanks, sir. All right, at this time, we have Ms. Thornton.
Good evening. How are y'all? Today, I sent in a budget to Mr. Causey, David Clark, and Ms. Melissa. I'm assuming y'all have that in front of y'all. What we're asking is basically echoing the same thing the other chiefs have spoke on, is to leave in our tax rate the same at 10 cent. If you look at my budget, you can see what we're using every bit of that. My budget's supposed to go up roughly $208,000, but with that, I'm running right out of 1,000 calls a year. I've got people without two sets of turnout gear, which is a big cancer causing, that's, you know, that's what we're after, making sure our guys are safe at fires when, you know, we respond to a call, when they come back from a fire, they got a second set of gear to put on. So, my budget shows that if you look on the Capitol Outlet staff, that's more turnout gear and other gear washers, so we can get gear washed, get gear back in service. Our main thing is keeping our guys safe, and with this money, that's what we will be using it for. And I really appreciate y'all's consideration of leaving it 10 cent.
Thanks, sir. Mr. James?
How are y'all? Mr. Causey, how are y'all? I guess y'all got my budget. I submitted it last night to David Clark. Got it? Okay. So, what we're asking is to remain at 10 cent. That gave us a total budget of $412,669.50. Everything's increased, so I'm not going to say what everybody else said, but we need your support to continue and support them, support Ivenhoe. If we don't get the support someplace, it's going to take a cut. I mean, that's obvious, so that's what I ask for me. All these departments need their tax rate to stay the same, so I hope you support that, and so we can support them, and thank y'all.
Thanks, sir. Chief Williams?
Good evening. I'm Chief Allen Williams, Tullis Bridge Fire Department, County Fire Chief. I submitted my budget also this morning to Mr. Clark's office, Ms. Burton. We're just asking to stay at the 10 cent, just like where we've been in the past. The money I've talked to Ms. Letha about, we're going to use to purchase a new truck, pay for more staffing, and that'll allow us to serve our community better, the people in the southern area around Delway and back toward Wecross. Without that money, we can't grow. We're going to be limited where we're at. The meeting we had earlier, a couple weeks ago with all y'all, I thought that was a good meeting. The local state legislature is 15 cent. We could go to the fire tax. We're not asking to do that. We got gentleman agreements here to stay at 10. We can operate within that. And as the county fire chief, I'll speak on behalf of all these fire chiefs out here and all the volunteers. They're just here to help. They want to help the citizens and the people that pass through this county. That's all we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Aman?
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I won't get into a lot of numbers here. Everybody else has already hit on that, but we're just asking for our seven and a half cent. This past year, we had 108,000 in repairs on our trucks. We've got 21-year-old trucks. We're operating with, I've got two stations I'm operating out of. We're second lowest funded in the county with tax, on a tax basis. I'm not asking for anything extra. I just want exactly what we've been getting, because it takes every dime of it for us to operate. Our guys, we try to keep everybody in good turnout gear, but our trucks are going to have to be replaced in the next year or two. Like I said, we're 21 years old, and this past year, we spent 108,000, and then we just got hit with a break-in in our, our building here. Guys stole 184,000 on our stuff. So, we're not asking anything extra. We just want to stay where we're at, and we just ask that you look at it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that. Concludes the list. Is there anyone else in the audience who wants to speak on behalf? This is concerning the budget?
Oh, the budget.
Okay. Public comment section will come later.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone? This time, we'll close the hearing, and we'll open another hearing for the proposed economic development expenditures for the '24, '25 budget. Anyone want to speak on that behalf? Hearing going once, going twice? Okay, we'll close that hearing. All right. At this time, even or not, we'll open another hearing for the amendments to the road naming ordinance. Mr. Starling?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this will actually be two public hearings as well. The first will be on the amendments to the road naming ordinance, and the second will be on the naming of a private road. I believe the clerk is going to take up that second matter. You have before you a proposed ordinance. The last time that I'm aware of, that we amended our road renaming or property addressing ordinances was back in 2011. So, the GIS staff came to me wanting to update these, to update certain definitions, to update the appeals process, using them to consolidate the two ordinances into one document so that you wouldn't have to refer back and forth between the two documents, and to set up a new permit requirements for property addressing, or to spell out permit requirements that were already in effect. I can go into this in as much detail or as little detail as you would like. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. You've got a copy of the proposed ordinance in front of you. A lot of the changes were just updating definitions to bring them into conformity to our current zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations, which were overhauled a few years ago, when the General Assembly required all local governments to update their zoning ordinances and their subdivision regulations.
Okay. Anyone have questions? Hearing none. We'll close the hearing. So, we need a motion to approve the amendments for the road naming ordinance. Correct. Proposed. So, moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor, raise your hand. It's approved unanimously. Let's see here. All right, we will open another public hearing for the naming of a private road. Ms. Shannon, would you tell us?
We have duly advertised a public hearing to receive comments on the recommendations of the Road Naming Committee for certain private roads. The Road Naming Committee recommends that PVT 1445-3347 be named Family Acres Lane.
Okay, any questions? Anyone have any comments from the audience? Hearing none, I'll close the hearing. I'll accept the motion to approve. The name.
Make a motion.
Got a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, it's unanimous. All right. They went easily. So, at this time, we go to item four. We need an update on the sales tax county property.
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
On May 21st, we opened our last bids. We had five bids that were received, the highest bid being $130,000. We have since advertised $130,000. The next qualifying bid must be at least $136,550. Those bids are due to the county, to the clerk, to the Board of Commissioners, and the County Administration Building, Building C, by 2:00 p.m. on June 4th, which is tomorrow.
Okay. All right, any questions? All right, I think that's, takes care of that. We'll go to the next item. Mr. Starling on the airport consultant contract?
Yes, sir. The board has in your agenda packets some rankings and a proposed resolution. The Clinton-Sampson Airport is, is required by the Division of Aviation to have a master agreement with an engineering firm to serve as airport consultants. They can use an on-call list, but the practice is to have a firm that serves as the airport consultant. Those are typically done for five-year terms. Division of Aviation reached out to the county and the city in January to remind us that our current five-year contract with Avcon was set to expire at the end of this fiscal year. On April 1st, the city and the county issued a request for qualifications. They received four responses to the RFQ. The Airport Advisory Board appointed a technical committee made up of pilots, the FBO, the county finance officer, and the city manager, who serves as the airport manager. They took those and based off of criteria that were developed by the airport board, they scored those. You have on page 11 of your agenda packets, the scoring of those. This is the process that we're required to follow under state law for engineering contracts and architectural contracts. You cannot use a bidding process. You have to use a scoring process like this. As you will see, the highest-scored firm is the existing airport consultant, Avcon Engineering. Second place was Parish and Partners. Third place was Delta Aviation, and fourth place was Makito Aviation. The Airport Advisory Board reviewed those at its last meeting and unanimously voted to recommend those to the Board of Commissioners and the City Council. You've got a copy of the RFQ in your agenda packet. You've got a copy of the SOQ that was submitted by Avcon, as well as a proposed resolution, which will adopt the airport board's recommendation and authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute a master agreement with Avcon. The way this works is, the master agreement is just, sets in place the consultant. Individual projects are then submitted through task orders, and then the consultant bids those out to construction firms once the design work is done.
And could you elaborate on the funding process?
Normally, different task orders are different. You have some that are 100% state-funded. There are also quite a few that are primary non-entitlement funds, which is 90-10, so 90% state-funded, and then the city and county each pay 5% of the required local match. You typically don't have many that require more than 10% local funds, which, because our airport is jointly owned, requires 5% from the county.
All right, does anyone have any questions? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the county manager to negotiate and execute a master agreement for engineering and planning services with Avcon Engineers and Planners Incorporated.
Second. Got a second? Any, any more discussion on this? I will elaborate a little bit. I'm part of the advisory board, have been for 15 years, and it is probably as frugally funded and dealt with as anything I've ever worked with. There's not a lot of money spent, especially county money. I'll take a vote now. All in favor approving? Raise your right hand. There's no opposed. It's passed unanimously. Okay, the next one was retracted, so we don't have that on the agenda. So, we'll go to board appointments from Vice Chair Lee.
Thank you. We have a couple of appointments that we need to fill because of resignations. I move that we appoint Summerlin Fairclough to fill a vacancy on the...
You have some that are a hundred percent state-funded. Um, there are also quite a few that are, uh, primary non-entitlement funds, which is ninety-ten. So ninety percent state-funded, and then the city and county each pay five percent of the required local match. You typically don't have many that require more than ten percent local funds, which because our airport is jointly owned, um, requires five percent from the county.
All right, does anyone have any questions? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I move that we adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to negotiate and execute a master agreement for engineering and planning services with AVCON Engineers and Planners Incorporated.
Second. Got a second? Any, any more discussion on this? I will elaborate a little bit that I'm part of the advisory board, have been for fifteen years, and, uh, it is probably as frugally, uh, funded and, and dealt with as anything I've ever worked with. There's not a lot of money spent, especially county money. Uh, I'll take a vote now. All in favor approving, raise your right hand. There's no oppose, it's passed unanimously. Okay, the next one was retracted, so we don't have that on the agenda. So we'll go to board appointments from vice chair.
Thank you. We have a couple of, um, appointments that we need to fill because of resignations. Um, I move that we appoint Summerlin Faircloth to fill a vacancy on the CVV board. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Also, I move that we approve, um, appointments Leslie Seals to serve on the library board. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay. That gets us to the consent agenda, uh, as amended. Any questions? On that? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the set agenda with a necessary correction.
Got a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. All right. Now we're down to item seven. Is there any information on that?
It's just for your information. It's just for your information. It's in your agenda.
That's in our packet, okay. All right, so we're, the county managers report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't really have a report. The only thing we, maybe want to spend a few minutes talking about, uh, is how you're gonna set up and when you want to have your first work session on the budget. Uh, I would share with the board that the one thing that staff would request that you do is after we have whatever number of work sessions that you have, is allow enough time that we have a week to then prepare the budget ordinance in order to get same approved by the end of June.
Okay. Do you have any dates?
No, sir.
Anyone got any suggested dates? How many, how many dates do you recommend? Two, three, four?
Well, I would start with one, and then, then you can, then you can determine what you need from there.
So don't need to start with the second one. I need to start with the first.
I'd get the first one and plan it early enough that you've got time for additional.
Okay.
Didn't we talk about Thursday, the sixth?
Yeah, we have. I think we've.
At ten, ten AM.
Okay, if you can't make it.
No, I can't make that.
Okay. That's out. All right, how about the thirteenth?
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
What day's thirteenth on this?
Thursday.
That's the following week. Mr. Lee? That's not gonna work for you?
Back up to Tuesday then.
Let's, can we talk about the tenth? We have to come that Monday morning for a board of E and R, and that's just to review the minutes and sign those. We might could do a session.
That'll work for me. Is it tenth?
Tenth.
Uh, what time do we want to do it?
Ten.
Ten.
Ten? All right.
My recommendation. Okay.
All right, so we'll set up for June tenth. We'll get it. At ten AM. All right, we're there. Do we have any other comments? Public comment?
No, sir, that's the only sign-up sheet.
All right.
I think you had one in the audience.
Yeah, this young lady, she wanted to speak.
Hello, commissioners as well as community. As you can see, I was a little bit excited earlier. I am Stephanie Graham from one oh eight Sampson Street, Clinton, North Carolina, and I am completely excited to be standing before you on tonight to share some amazing information with you. I come tonight to invite not only the commissioners, but also the community that's behind me, to an amazing event that's gonna be happening on June the nineteenth from four PM to seven PM in downtown Clinton, and it is none other than the Second Annual Juneteenth Event and Celebration in downtown. Now, many of you may say, what is Juneteenth? How do we even know what this is? I, shoot, I just heard what it was, right? Anybody out here thinking that? Right, I know, I was thinking the same thing too. But just because we don't know, that doesn't mean that we should not learn and educate ourselves as well as our community about what it is. So, Juneteenth, also known as the Freedom Day, commemorates the emancipation of enslaved African Americans in the U.S. Now, does that mean that this is an African American event? No, it does not. This event is for everyone, not just the African Americans. So I want to see you, 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 and you, and you at this event. Why? Because it's for all of us. This is a time to reflect, celebrate, and educate our community as we work towards a more inclusive society, right? That's what we all want, right? An inclusive society. So, this year event, let's get down to what's happening there. The Call Review Band will be there. Uh, some of you may have saw them at Ag Day. They will be back. The Gospel Entertainer, Ms. Hattie, will be there. Um, there will be health and wellness checks as well as voter registration and many others. So you have been invited, so if you don't come, it's not because you did not hear you was invited. It's because you did not come. So I look forward to seeing all of you there and celebrating with us together.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone else want to speak at this time? Mr. Grayson?
My name is Bob Grayson. I live at two five five six Greensbridge Road, Garland, North Carolina, and I stand in support of our volunteer firemen. In the middle of the night, they get a call. They all have pagers on. They respond, no matter what it is. They respond to the fire. All of the chiefs submit their budget. They weren't appointed yesterday. They work their rank, their, their way up in the ranks to be chiefs and to know what each of their departments needs in a budget. Then they take their budgets to the fire board, and they decide if that's what is correct. And then they submit it. And to include in a speech, talking about some of these men with some bad apples that might come through the ranks. We all have bad apples, but these chiefs are not bad apples. These chiefs run to our assistance when we need them. They're the ones that put on the coats. They're the ones that are on their hands and knees crawling into a fire. When someone has a heart attack, they're the first ones there performing CPR. They're the ones that go home after they know that they did all they could, and they got them to the hospital. They all know what they need. They all know what their departments need. They want their men to go home each and every day. They want safe equipment for them. So please, they know what they need. They're in good positions. They've been through the ranks. They worked their way up from a fireman to the chief. Support our firemen, because I know they'll support us when we need them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grayson. Does anyone else have anything they want to say? All right, at this time, we'll close the public comment section. Accept the motion to recess to reconvene on the, what was the date?
Tenth.
Tenth at ten.
Tenth at ten. I make the motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor? All right, we are recessed to reconvene. Thank you. Thank you for coming.